Call this meeting to order. We're gonna start with the special conference meeting. Bailey? He is not here, so I will do it. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father...
Are in heaven.
Albeit in heaven, the kingdom come. I will be done. And earth has sinned and sinned and sinned and breathed. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. But we have not had temptation but the risk from you.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Do you want to start with the K-9 committed fund balance?
Yes, thank you Council President. Before you have a resolution discussing the amount of donations that were received this year for the K-9 fund of $12,813.42. We expended $2,781.24 for the care and feeding of Batu. We received numerous donations, including Peri Vet, correct? For healthcare for the dog and other food donations. So I'd like to thank all those members that came together to donate and all the citizens that donated. And through this resolution, I recommend that the remainder of funds, $10,032.18, be reserved in the K-9 committed fund balance.
Sounds good.
So we in consensus to move that to the business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that moves. And regulating animals in the city of Batavia?
Yes, I think...
No, I was going to ask when would be the correct time to make a change. A spelling problem in this is all it is.
In which one?
In the animals on the back, the restriction of donkeys. Donkeys does not deserve an apostrophe either time.
Donkeys does not deserve an apostrophe, okay.
Not possessive, it's multiple.
Donkeys don't own property?
If the donkey owns property, he gets the apostrophe.
Is that on the resolution or the actual...
It's in the red. It's in the red.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Every time it talks as donkeys in plural, it's the apostrophe. It should be the IES, I believe.
No, it's just EYS.
EYS?
Yep.
Strike apostrophe from all donkeys.
I'm sorry, that's what my degree is in.
Okay, Rachel, if you...
No, I'm...
You want to cover that then?
I'd be happy to.
Thanks Patty.
Yes ma'am.
So in response to requests from City Council to research potential restrictions on animals and fowl in the city of Batavia, I'm submitting a resolution that would add restrictions in Section 190-42, Miscellaneous Regulations of the City of Batavia Municipal Code. I was able to look at other like-sized cities' codes, including Geneva, Canandaigua, Jamestown, Almira, and Lockport. They all have code restrictions on animals, but in a variety of forms. Some require special permits, some only restrict them in R1 districts. Some of those cities actually still have agricultural districts, so they're still allowed. But each one of these codes did address animals in some way, shape, or form. So after looking at that, I worked with the code enforcement office, specifically Doug Randall and the city's attorney, to come up with regulations and restrictions for animals in the city. So as written, the regulations would restrict persons from owning, bringing into, possessing, keeping, harboring, or feeding farm animals, cloven hoofed animals, equine, fowl, which include ducks, turkey, or geese, including but not limited to cattle, horse, sheep, goats, pigs, swine, llamas, alpacas, ducks, turkey, geese, I say it again, feral cats, ponies, donkeys without the apostrophe, mules, or any other farm animal or wild animal within the city limits. To this, there were some exceptions that I thought were important to call out, which included chickens. Chickens may be kept as long as they are penned appropriately, do not accumulate feces or cause odor or unsightly or unsafe conditions, harborage, including transportation to and from racetracks and all associated grounds, special events with approval of an event application, that would be when it's on city property, and then animals in transit through the city would also be an exception, and the transportation to and from veterinary hospitals and clinics, including short-term boarding for medical procedures. So tonight, the ask is for council to move this to the business meeting, and it's a referral directly to the planning committee.
Can we take chickens out? I mean, who wants chickens next to their house?
Well, there are people in town with chickens.
Are there really?
Yes.
Yeah, very much.
I've got one in my ward, I know.
I've got one of mine.
But they hit, but like I said, the city controlled it because it was out of control, and then they controlled it.
And as long as they're kept clean and properly housed, it shouldn't be a problem. If it doesn't, this ordinance covers that of, you know, not being taken care of and so on, and a large amount of animal waste being deposited. And if it starts to create an odor that drifts over to your house, then it becomes a problem, and then it's coming.
With the chicken situation, you say if they're properly housed. Define properly housed. I mean, I know years ago, you had chicken coops, you know, and they were in the coops. I mean, how, what's...
It says right here, "They may be kept as long as they are penned appropriately, do not accumulate feces, cause odor, or in unsightly or unsafe condition." So as long as those criteria are met, any structure you want to use is fine, I would assume.
They have to be penned, they can't be run around someone's backyard.
The problem is too is they...
They can be, as long as they're fenced in a backyard, that would be...
Not creating a...
But can they not fly?
I don't know.
Chickens, yeah, because we've had a situation in my neighborhood where they have actually been going over the fence. I mean, the neighbor had put up about a six-foot fence, and they keep getting into her yard.
Well, I wouldn't call that penned appropriately then.
They would need to put it up.
They can fly up over eight feet.
Right.
Yeah.
So appropriately would be more in cages or in buildings.
Like a pen with a...
Not allowed to escape and get into your neighbor's lawn.
Like a chicken coop.
Perhaps, yes.
Or enclose you with chicken wire.
Right, so they can't go up.
Right, they can't go up. Like if you're by the guy who's in Seattle, you got the bird pens, right? They can't go up.
They have netting up on top.
So that would all consider appropriately, meaning if they're escaping, I would, that's not penned appropriately, because now they're trespassing or getting into your neighbor's property, that's not neighborly, and that's wrong. My concern is, what do we define as a wild animal? Because I don't want to limit people who have bird feeders from feeding songbirds, okay? And that came up a while back. So I just want to make sure that we don't confuse the issue and let people mistakenly believe we're trying to regulate songbirds and bird feeders. That's not the case here. We're talking about farm animals. So I just want to make sure that a wild animal is not a wild songbird. I mean, it's kind of different. I just want to make sure we don't lump too much into that by wild animal.
Yeah, I have some thoughts. I wrote them down, I'd like to share them with everyone as we go into this. Spent a lot of time working on this, but number one, I just hope this isn't just a reaction to a complaint by some neighbor feuding over goats. You know, if there's any resolution that we can reach without passing a law, I think that would be great. If it's a simple health issue, if there's animal waste that's not being picked up on a daily basis, that's certainly serious. We have so many laws on the books now, I bet even the police department can't keep track of them. You know, cars parked over sidewalks all night, motorcycles, the other day, motorcycle goes by the house, he didn't even have mufflers on, he just lopped them off. Vehicles with blacked-out windows, I've been receiving a lot of complaints about those, that you can't even see if there's a driver. The other night, Chief, you're gonna love this, I'm sitting on my porch, having some coffee, watching the news, here goes a kid on an unregistered dirt bike. No plates on it, it's right down the middle of the street, so we're getting some of the big-city stuff going on. And there's a lot of quality of life issues, but reading this proposed legislation, I see a lot of areas that aren't discussed, such as snakes that are constrictors, pythons, venomous reptiles, animals, like Gino said, some of the wild animals. There's no mention of rabbits. A lot of people have rabbits. I grew up with some young guys that had homing pigeons, there's no mention of them. Myself, I prefer a neighbor with a fenced-in yard that picks up over his goats or any animal, rather than a neighbor that turns his dogs loose. And I've been through this, two large dogs that they never clean up. And by the time you get county agency and the health department involved, it's a nightmare. Feral cats are prohibited. However, people let their house cats roam the neighborhoods. They kill sparrows, robins, leaving the carcasses for property. I had to clean up one the other day. And depositing their waste in the flower beds. But that's okay. Cat sprays on a park are just short of skunk spray. If you ever have a cat spray in your yard, you know what that's all about. Chickens, we're allowing chickens, but there's no mention of roosters. And a lot of people have chickens, and they throw a couple of roosters in there. Myself, I've spent a lot of time in the country, I don't care about animal noise, but a lot of people aren't gonna like a rooster going at it at five in the morning. And here we get into some serious things. Horses and ponies are not allowed, except for the racetrack. It seems to be kind of discriminatory. Section 190-35 of the city code states that residential area, districts with private stables, this is our Batavia city code, one horse shall be, in a building shall be considered the equivalent of one motor vehicle. There's no mention in this about Amish or Mennonite people coming into the city with horses and wagons to go to markets, which is allowed in nearby communities, and communities pretty close to us. I've been in where people come in with their horses and wagons to trade and all that. And just for everyone's information, the Americans with Disability Act restricts service animals, it's pretty well restricted, to dogs, and get this, miniature horses or ponies in the range from 24 to 34 inches of height generally, that weigh between 70 and 100 pounds. So you can have a miniature service horse. The New York State Attorney General and New York State Fair Housing Act defines support animals are any animals that provide comfort or emotional support. If they don't qualify as service animals under ADA, they qualify under the Fair Housing Act. This is not limited to any, to dogs. Any animal may qualify. New York support animals, animals that provide comfort or emotional support. So this is what we're up against. I have serious concerns about violating civil rights of citizens with disabilities, and the ADA defines service animals as dogs, miniature horses, et cetera. So I hope anyone that currently has animals that may violate this proposed law would be at least granted grandfather rights. You know, it'd be heck to have a pet animal for seven years, and then all of a sudden be given a 30-day notice you have to remove it, and it's no longer your pet. I'd just like to see some of these problems just resolved without passing more laws. Laws end up with future litigation and the cost and all the rest. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm of the opinion that most people have a service animal, keep it in the house. Granted, they probably don't keep their service horse in, but their cat or the dog or the chicken is usually kept near the person who needs the service animal, on the orange of the yard, and that's a good place to put it.
Well, it's very simple. You can also write into this an out clause for exceptions, for that type of exception.
Or wouldn't they just, couldn't they apply for a variance in a certain case?
I would do that, yes.
So, I mean, any code is applicable to be applied for a variance for a special circumstance, so that would be all part of the proper paperwork to do that. As far as, now, Rachel, did you want to introduce George's film?
Yes, this is Serena. She's here for George tonight from the Bergen Kessler.
You could maybe enlighten us on, you helped to write this, or your firm did, and this is something that's obviously in other communities, and I would assume this is obviously working in other communities, or it would have been channelled and or narrowed down by now. And I don't want to make it into a large, drawn-out thing, but we have had incidents where goats were running loose in people's neighborhoods, and there is no ordinance that we have that covers such a thing. Now, dogs are covered. If they're running loose, they can be captured, lost in the dog pound, and people pay a fine. There is no clause for these kind of animals. So that, to me, shows that we need to correct our code to cover this, because it's now a problem, and it's not being kept on people's property, the animals are escaping, and when the police arrive, they're unable, they have no authority to force any ordinance, because there is no ordinance covering. So that's what we're trying to do here, and I think it is a void in the code, and it needs to be addressed.
So a little common sense goes a long way. Why would you have farm animals in the city?
In the city.
I mean, you've got to use your head too, you know what I mean?
Well, it's not, and that's why we unfortunately have to address it, because we've had a couple complaints, and it's not going away, and it's getting worse and worse and worse.
And I support, I support what Rachel put together, these restrictions, it'll go maybe to the planning board, because again, you're opening a door. You allow goats, then what, someone's gonna have, like you said, they're gonna bring in a cow? I mean, come on, like you said, common sense. These are farm animals.
The issue, one of the issues that recently came up, and it was in my neighborhood, is that one of our neighbors has goats, and not only are they goats, but they're horned animals, and they have horns, and they're literally running around our neighborhood. They've been able to escape a number of times, and my, across the street neighbor called me and said, "The goats are out again, they're in my front lawn." The other day, actually, one went into her garage, I have pictures of that. I was away at the time, and one of my other neighbors sent me videos of the goat on my front lawn. But these are, you know, if it was a harmless animal, I wouldn't be as concerned, but we now have horned animals running around our neighborhood loose. Now, anybody, I mean, any animal is capable of charging someone at any time if they're antagonized, and that could put us in an odd situation, that we could have some neighbors that might possibly get hurt. That was my concern, is now it becomes kind of a safety issue. And the police department was wonderful, they came right down, and I don't remember the officer's name, but he said, "Mr. Canelli, literally, my hands are tied, there's absolutely nothing I can do." I said, "We have two goats," there was two at the time, "that had escaped, "we have two horned animals running wild around my neighborhood, and you're standing there telling me there's absolutely nothing you can do." And he sat there for a minute and thought, and he said, "Not really." And then he sat there for another couple seconds, and he went over to the goat, he approached the goat, and he cornered the goat against the front porch, and was able to grab the goat and kind of cradle the goat and bring it over, and put it back over the fence. He didn't have to do that, but he did it because he realized, okay, we have a dangerous situation, and I've got to do something. I can't just let these goats run wild. And in the meantime, also, the resident wasn't home, so we couldn't go to the resident, you know, like you say, yeah. If we could go to the resident and say, "Your goats are out, you need to, you know, contain these goats, and you need to do it now," it wouldn't have been as scary of a situation. But I just know that a number of my neighbors are very concerned about their safety, more so than anything else. But obviously, the neighbor that's directly affected is right next door, and she has had a number of complaints of, you know, not only them getting loose, but the chickens getting into her yard. So I'm responding from complaints of my constituents. They also happen to be my neighbors. Like I mentioned before, when this originally came up, I didn't want to get in-between neighbors here. I love all my neighbors, we all get along splendidly, and I don't want to create problems between my neighbors and myself, or one neighbor against another neighbor. But with all of this coming up, I had to react. I've got a number of neighbors that were demanding that I react, and I wanted to as well. And when the police told me there's really nothing they can do, that's when I called Gino and said, "I need you to look into what our options are here, because we have a situation that's out of control, and if we allow this situation to continue to go out of control, we'll have other ones that'll follow."
They're gonna open the door.
Yeah.
And this hasn't been one complaint, there was another complaint of goats on a couple, several blocks away, and that was resolved. But this one isn't gonna get resolved, and it's been attempted for a year or two now.
And we have nothing that we can do about it. There's no laws in place for us to say to the property owner, "You need to do this," or, there is no or.
Or stop letting your goats run loose, and they could say, "What law am I following, any or not?"
Right, we don't have any or. There's nothing, there's no repercussions for somebody that doesn't want to, you know, do the right thing, if you will.
We have to do something.
And I agree with Bob, you know, I'm not one to like make a plethora of laws for every little thing, but I would probably could tell you that every code we have in here has a name attached to it. Where someone tried to leave their property, and it went and disrepair so bad, there was no ordinance, we had to create one, or not us, but prior council members had to. And that's, unfortunately, that's a task that we have to do, and we have to regulate these things, and we have never needed it, but we're getting to the point now where it's starting to encroach on other people's privacy, other people's freedoms, where there's goats in their backyard, and they don't own these animals, they shouldn't have to deal with that. So unfortunately, here we are.
Well, you know, and Polly said, you know, "Why do people have goats?" Well, they have a girl there, a younger girl, I don't know what her age is, but she participates, from what I'm told, in 4-H, and she brings these goats to the fair, and so she's involved in that, from what her mother tells me. And so, you know, I think that's a wonderful thing, but again, I know people that have wanted horses, that obviously couldn't put a horse in the city, so they hired a stable to take care of it, and they stable their horse, and I would think that maybe the same thing would be true for somebody that wanted to participate in agriculture in 4-H. You'd have it out on a farm someplace.
If it's a large enough animal, if it's small, like a rabbit, you've got cages, chickens, you can have cages, and there's limitations, obviously, because we have a large group of people living in a small area. And we don't, and we have 15,000 approximately people living in three by three, you know, approximately square miles, you have to be cognizant of your neighbors, and you have to be, you have to, you know, there's some give and take there.
We have a lot of laws on our books right now that restrict city residents from doing a lot of things on their property versus a lot of my family members that live out in the country, and they can pretty much do whatever they want.
Let their laws grow as high as they want, or build a shed wherever they want.
Living in the city has more restrictions than when you live out in the country.
That's why you live in the city.
Certain neighborhoods have, you know, housing associations that restrict, can't even put up a clothesline in the park area. So, you know, there's a lot of restrictions when you move into the city that you don't have obviously out in the country. I don't mean to be captain obvious, but the point I'm trying to make is, if you're going to live in the city, you live in the city knowing that you're gonna live under certain restrictions.
And in smaller property constraints, you're not gonna have five or six acres to let, you know, animals. So at this point, we're only talking about referring it to the planning board. So we can correct its spelling here, and we could maybe, you know, make the note that we're not trying to regulate songbirds and things, we're just looking at...
Farm animals.
Farm animals, and let the planning board have a shot at it, and then let it come back to us. In the meantime, we've talked about it, public can give us some feedback on how they feel about it, and we can then, we will have, this is about a four-week process, so we can go through that process, and let's hear the input from the people we represent, and hear the input from the planning board, who are also our friends and neighbors who sit on that board, and let's see where this takes us.
You better put zoo animals on there too, because you never know where you're gonna go to somebody's people.
Tiger feng?
You never know. Come on, you got ghosts in your backyard, who's gonna really get a bite?
Well...
Hold on, one at a time, Rich.
I read this over, it seems reasonable to me. We can't be held hostages to what ifs, this could happen. You could bring up all the laws surrounding this, but we can't be held hostages to what if. We have a reasonable solution. It can be tweaked down the road. You could make exceptions with variances, but I don't see this as anything that we have to worry about litigation down the road, because we're regulating goats.
Anyone else?
No.
I just want to go on record, I'm not supporting the say-as-written until I see some refinement on it with, as far as pet rabbits and some of the other items, people letting their house cats out in people's yards and not caring, not even taking care of them. I mean, we, I have quite a few house cats coming through our yard on a daily basis, and I'm constantly yelling at them to go. I'd just like to see some refinement before it goes further, so, without pursuing it, just put me some no.
Well, that's what the planning board is for, I would hope they would look into it and get feedback, and try to make as many angles covered as possible, and without causing any major inconvenience to the people that live here. I think most people are gonna see this as reasonable, but I'm waiting for their feedback, and we'll see what they have to say.
Yeah, just no to the goat law.
So are we in consensus to move this to the business meeting for a vote to move this to the planning board?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that it's moved? And I think it's great that we have these healthy discussions, because every once in a while, we have these problems, and I like everyone's input, because it gives me some ideas as well. So we'll see how this plays out. Budget amendment resolution?
The attached resolution is regarding year-end budget transfers to cover expenses. While many departments came in under budget, the easiest way to cover these expenses over budget is using the contingency. So I'm asking for the use of $92,148.34 of contingency to cover overage and legal fees, community development expenses, community development contract services, economic development expenses, clerk treasurer assessment supplies, information services, which is information technology, and engineering and professional fees. This year, you'll notice, we do not, at this point, need to make any budget amendments for the healthcare fund. The last two years I've been with you all, we've had to cover enormous expenses in the healthcare fund, so very excited we're not coming with any amendments to this fund. So I'd like this also to be moved to the business meeting tonight, so we can continue to move forward with our audit and year-end processes.
Any questions, are there any of the items, I know there's several listed there, they total up to $92,000, but there's at least seven or eight there, so any questions I heard, Bob?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rachel, why the increase in the legal fees and the, also the large increase in economic development?
Yep, so I'll go with economic development first. We're actually recognizing three pieces of property onto our books, so this isn't any type of expense that we've paid out, but we need to recognize 51 city center, which is the loading dock area and parking lot that we had foreclosed on years ago, but has never been recognized. Also, 2C Law Street, which is property near the yard waste station. So again, it's something we've foreclosed on, but never officially moved it to our books. And then a parcel on 32 Edwards that sits between the softball field and the parking lot was another parcel we foreclosed on, so we needed to recognize that as an expense for this year.
You say city center property, the side loading dock here?
Correct, it's the loading dock and that parcel of parking lot.
Which is for really old...
We've never recognized it, no. And two years ago, we recognized all of the city center parcels that we currently have under our control onto our books as well, and it shows as an expense. And if you want a more detailed description, I'm gonna pass it to Lisa to explain more.
So these properties are sitting in an asset called property acquired through foreclosure. They sit there on a temporary basis until the city decides what they're gonna do with it. Typically, what happens is in a year or two, we foreload on it, and it moves off of that, and that's the typical course of action. These properties have been sitting in that temporary account for quite a while, so technically, what we're doing is we're moving them out of that one asset and moving them to another asset called land or buildings, or it's a fixed asset. And in doing so, with your debts and credits, you have to debit an expense account. So we debited economic development, which created a debt overage. That's the technical accounting.
Is anyone using this up?
I'm sure people are using this up.
Yes, periodically, we still have to make some repairs to it, but we were able to take an MRI machine out of it a couple of years ago to get the... But we were able to take an MRI machine out of it a couple of years ago to get that parcel ready for the theater. So, you know, I think periodically it is used. And then on legal expenses, I knew we were going to be over in legal. We actually did a six-month budget adjustment and we are still over. We had some employee matters that were taken care of over the year. We had some items that went very close to moving into arbitration that took a lot of resources. And frankly, we used a lot of resources in our water and wastewater accounts, which we did book a lot of that to it. But in the beginning, we were using the general fund to help with preparation of documents to and from the DEC from the city for what was happening with the wastewater treatment plant.
Any other question? I mean, the items listed? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, it's moved. Motion to adjourn the special conference?
I'm sorry.
Jackson Street?
I have an addition, I'm so sorry.
Okay, agreed to, Ron, thanks, sorry.
No, we had a lot of paperwork tonight, I apologize.
This is the Jackson Street, the speaker.
Yes, thank you, Council President. As we've seen many times, the city was successful in implying for and receiving funding to replace the four-inch, six-inch line on Jackson Street with a new eight-inch water main. The council has accepted the grant. Well, they first allowed us to apply for it, now we've accepted it. And now we need to take lead agency status. The consultants who are working with La Bella believes it's an unlisted action, so we need to send out letters to interested involved agencies to get their comments in the next thirty days. So this resolution, I'd hope we could move to business and it's declaring lead agency status for the Jackson Street Water Project. Thank you.
We've been working on this for several weeks now, this has been coming up. Part of the process.
It's a process, yes.
So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business?
Yes.
Okay, that should be everything, I think, because I have, this was the updated agenda. So now can I give a motion to approve, Mr. Canelli? Mr. Leeley, seconds. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Richmond?
Yes.
Piotkowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Leeley?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
And I'll call to order the regular business meeting. You've all had a copy of the April twenty-twenty-two financials. Any questions or concerns in reference to those?
Yeah, and number one, page one. Under the monthly financial report, number one, page one, community celebrations.
Number one, page one, and I don't see it.
Seventy-five fifty.
Is this the second?
Seventy-five fifty, under expenses.
Account six-four-six-zero?
Seven.
Oh, I see it, I see it, I see it.
Seven-five-five-zero.
It's about midway down the page, Rachel.
Okay.
Okay, I had a couple phone calls this week as to why the city discontinued the picnic in the park. Apparently, there was something on one of the media outlets that the city cut the funding to picnic in the park, so GoArt wasn't going to do it anymore.
Well, I can speak to this. I can speak to this, I'm on the council there. It costs five thousand dollars to have the bands that play at the picnic in the park. We gave four thousand of it for years. About, oh, four years ago, three years ago, we pulled it out saying we weren't going to, it was going to be one of our budget cuts. We're going to save some money, we're pulling it out. They can't do it without that four thousand dollars. So I might as well tell you the rest of the report. They're going to work with Ramble. Ramble has thirty bands. They will pay for the bands. GoArt will pay for the art side of it. There will be things for kids, there will be games and balloons and face painting and arty things that go on from GoArt. They simply can't do it without our four thousand dollars. And I said that at the time and I'm sad that I wasn't louder.
So they're basically partnering up with the Ramble on their kind of.
It's the only way they can say that.
They're going to have a different event.
It will be a different event, because the picnic in the park really has to do with the big stage, with the bands and everything, and that's five thousand dollars. They don't have five thousand, they have one. And we were giving them the other four.
Okay, well, I mean, apparently it just sounded like this is something the city just did and it was.
No, we did it, I'm going to say three years ago, and I could be wrong and I'll bet you anything, somebody could shake their head at me, how long ago, three years? Yeah, three years ago, we pulled it. And they've tried, they've really tried, because I'm on the board here.
Anything else in reference to the finances?
No, it's, thank you.
Okay, so are we in consensus to approve the April twenty-twenty-two financials?
Yes.
Okay. You've all received a copy of the May nine, twenty-twenty-two minutes. Any questions or concerns on that? Any omissions or corrections? Okay, are we in consensus to approve the May twenty-twenty-two minutes? Okay, we're approved. We have numerous agenda items today. I will assign those now. Forty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, amending the police department budget for the Homeland Security Grant. Mr. Canelli? Resolution forty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, resolution for the funding between the county and the city for funds related to the youth bureau. Mr. McGinnis? Forty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, the ordinance officer position. Ms. Pacino? Fifty, twenty-twenty-two, the intermunicipal agreement with Genesee County Planning Board. Mr. Richmond? Fifty-one, twenty-twenty-two, the M C J construction for the filter media project. Mr. Leeley? Fifty-two, twenty-twenty-two, the canine committed balances, which just recently moved. Mr. Piotkowski? Fifty-three, twenty-twenty-two, the animal ordinance. Mr. Leeley? Fifty-four, twenty-twenty-two, the budget amendments. Schmidt? And fifty-five, twenty-twenty-two, the lead agency for Jackson.
I'd like to do Jackson Street.
Okay, you can. Sorry?
It's okay. It's okay.
I know that's in your area of.
I'm excited about it.
Communications?
Ever-present church submitted their application for Family Fun Day on Saturday, July sixteenth, eleven AM to three PM. And it's in the parking lot right outside of their location.
Any questions or concerns on that, Bob?
Yeah, I see that they're going to be using electricity. Is there an estimate on what the cost of the electricity will be?
They're plugging into their own.
That's where their church is.
That's where their church is.
Yeah, they're going to run electric right out.
Fine, thank you.
Yep, no cost to us.
Any other questions? Okay, the next one?
And Justice King submitted their application for Juneteenth, this Saturday, June eighteenth, from one to seven PM. This would be in Austin Park.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Yeah, I have two questions, the same, electricity there, they're going to be using electricity. And the other question is, will there be someone from the city when they finish to inspect to make sure there's no horse when they were left in the park?
That was a concern from before, so when this gets approved, I will communicate that back to the organizer.
I'm sure there won't be a problem, so it's just, and what's the estimate on electricity?
I don't have an estimate on that. We, if, if we charged anything, it would be after the fact, but.
Is there, are they even metered? I thought when you use the pavilion, you're kind of, it's part of the deal, is.
If there's enough, yeah, I mean, as long as they don't, there's not a big, it's not a big power source there, but I believe they can use it just to be of an application.
No, I mean, there's a plug, right, if you put it in there and I mean, they put music and whatnot on there, loudspeakers, stuff like that. It's always, every, I may have never heard of anybody asking about electricity whenever anybody, whether the church or anybody's reserving it, so I don't really see that as a point and I don't think we have a meter where we can.
I don't think you can legally meter and resell a utility anyway.
Right.
In other words, I don't think we can add a sub-meter and then say, okay, we're selling you electricity.
I don't think we've ever metered for it, I've never heard.
So you're kind of answering your own question.
I was just curious.
If we charge them for the electricity, then we're kind of reselling electricity, aren't we?
They're going to fall under the permit, you pay for the permit, for the, for the park, they use that, that's all.
It's always been part of the, I mean, if I want to rent the pavilion in my park in the backyard for my kid's graduation party, I don't pay for the electricity.
Right. And this is a really good cause, as well as a lot of them that are there that use the park. So that's kind of a courtesy that we kind of accept to bring that entertainment, that event into the city. It's a little bit of electricity, I think it's reasonable.
These are events that are open to the public.
Right.
Yeah, it's the.
So, I mean, I don't know if we've ever, I don't know, the first I've ever heard of it, actually, so I don't know if it's something we should be concerned about at this point unless we find someone hooks up a major.
There's no other cost from the other department, so if you wanted to say that twenty-five dollar application fee goes towards electricity. But we don't charge specifically for it.
It's like a Back to the Future event where there's one point six gigawatts of electricity being used, I can understand. All right, so anything else on that? Next city council conference meeting will be held Monday, June twenty-seventh, seven PM. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Also, there's one more event for the Brothers at Oz Play.
Yes, there is.
I saw Patty at the Presbyterian Church this past Saturday, I think it was. It's really worth going to see, very entertaining, a lot of fun.
Especially because we're going to be the ones talking about the Brisbane Mansion.
Yeah, a lot of educational information.
You told you so much. It is really worth it, there's one we're showing.
So I highly recommend it. If you haven't seen it yet, you're missing a great opportunity to see a nice play.
When is the next show?
I believe it's the fifteenth.
It's the Wednesday.
It's Wednesday at seven o'clock. Very nice setup in that, very intimate, very nice. It's like you're right there. It was really cool.
The original church, just a little further.
It was really cool. So if you haven't seen it, you're missing out on a great, great thing. Okay, city attorney's report.
We have nothing to report, Mr.
City manager's report.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to welcome tonight Tammy Hathaway, our new B D C director. Tammy is well-known in our community. She was the former executive director with United Way. She's partnered with every agency imaginable across Genesee County. Many people have known her before and if you don't, I hope you get a chance to get to know her. She also worked in lending and mortgages before, so she has business experience. And I know, I'm very excited to have her working for the Batavia Development Corporation and assisting our city with economic development. So Tammy, welcome. Man, I didn't realize Shannon Mahoney was here. I don't think we've ever announced her as the bid director, so I don't want to leave you out on the other side of the room. Shannon was appointed several months ago and has had a great working relationship with the city and is bringing a lot of fun, exciting events to downtown. And we couldn't be more pleased to get to work with her as well.
Thank you.
She's my neighbor. She's my neighbor, but she's not the one with the goat.
I've chased those goats.
Hey, she's chasing them.
Anything else, Rachel?
Yes, I'd just like to give the floor to the police chief to talk about some potential citizens' training and the SRO discussions we've been having with the school district.
Sure. So in light of the mass violence that's taken place across our country, unfortunately, there has been requested, requests for, increased requests for active threat training across the city. So we're going to be hosting a public training session, probably two of them in the upcoming weeks. That will be advertised very shortly. We'll probably use this room right here to teach our citizens how to react in such events. Also, there was some sweeping legislative, new laws that came out at the end of the session that we're still kind of digesting and see how they're going to affect us and the way that we move forward during our job. And then, as Rachel mentioned, we have been in discussions with the school district for several years regarding adding additional SROs. And at this point in time, it looks like they're going to be moving forward with an additional position. They will be talking about that at their next school board meeting, getting approval for that. So I know that Rachel will be bringing forward an updated contract at some point in time, as soon as we get that officially, made official.
Thank you, Chief. Lastly, we had a request to look at the new city water bill. So on your table, everyone has a copy of the city water bill. And I'm going to pass it over to Superintendent Michael Figarella to kind of discuss what you're looking at. I also, he put in the letter that residents will get, and if you all recall, one-third of the city is billed each month. So there's been two sets of new water bills that have come out. The last set will be this month. So not everybody in the city has seen these. But there is a letter that accompanies it. And also, it looks like you put the ordinance in and the resolution of the law passing the amount we charge for water back in March. Just so everybody had a full understanding of what goes into the charges in the water bill are set by law by council each year. And with that, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you. So basically, two things have changed with the water bill. Like Rachel mentioned, the water rate was increased in April and then our billing system is new to us. So that's why our residents are seeing these brand-new water bills. And these new bills are extremely transparent in comparison to the old water bills. It breaks down each individual charge. So every charge you see here, water charge, sewer charge, excuse me, water meter charge, sewer meter charge, capital improvement fee, each one of these charges have always been on the water bill. Nothing is new. These charges are not new. And then it goes on to show you your consumption history, your previous balance, your new balance, any penalties that they may have. It's very self-explanatory and, like I said, it really helps break down what we actually get charged for as residents of the city. Any questions on?
Yeah, I requested this to be on, I had two phone calls and both of them were almost mirroring each other. But one was, the person asked me where his sewer meter was.
Yeah, so.
And I've received the full explanation of that. I just think sometimes when something, little thing changes, people say, oh, now they're charging me for a sewer meter and I don't even have one. And, you know, that was a big question and I understand, I like the way the bill is.
Yep.
It breaks everything down, it's exactly what you're paying. And the sewer meter charge is part of the water meter.
Correct, and that is correct. There is no sewer meter.
Right.
It's, the water meter is your sewer meter.
I totally responded to the person, I'm going to go outside and look for my sewer meter, when I find it, I'll call you back. But give me a call, and he did, and we discussed it. And the other question that came up was under usage. And like, what does the number nine mean? It really doesn't say, it just says usage, nine million gallons or whatever. What does the number?
So, we charge the thousand, so on this bill that's in front of you, the ten, are you speaking of at this point?
Uh, any number, after current reading, then it says usage.
Yeah, so it, based on, so in this case, we charge the thousand, so, help me out if I'm not doing this correctly, but.
The number would be the thousand.
Yes, it shows the usage of ten, that's ten thousand gallons. Correct. And that's how that breaks down. It just doesn't say that, you know. So like if your bill is nine thousand, nine hundred, or if you use nine thousand, nine hundred, nine nine gallons, your bill is going to be for nine thousand gallons.
Right. They didn't understand what the number meant and they said, they did call City Hall and they finally got an answer from somebody fairly knowledgeable, so, which was good. In this particular case, the individual had twenty-one for a number. which was good, and in this particular case, the individual had 21 for a number, and he said, whoa, I didn't, I know I didn't use 21,000 gallons, there is a problem with meter or something, which I guess your crews are resolving, but, I, I just wanted this brought to the public, so they realize there's no such thing as a sewer meter, the sewer meter charge is a part of the water meter charge, okay?
Thank you. So, to clarify for everyone else who didn't get clarification by phone, what you're saying is, that top number, in this case, it says 10 point, it's a decimal, it's going to end up carrying all the way down, because that's your meter, then that also is going to be your sewer, because you're assuming, you use that amount, then that same amount went down the drain at some point, and then water meter charge and sewer charge is all based on that first number, so, you're, if you see different numbers down there, that's going to be something off, because it should be one number, and then it should just carry down that list, correct? All right, and that's why it's, it's broken down that way, but it's the same number, it's not 10 times 5, or whatever that is. Got it? That was good.
And we hope, in the fall into winter, we will have online, uh, acceptance of online payments, and not only online payments, but the ability to use multiple apps to pay your water bill, including Venmo and other apps, to make it much easier for, um, all generations of residents to make payments, um, so, very excited when that comes out, and this project wouldn't have been possible without the hard work of Terri Dean, um, she is a financial clerk, uh, who works directly with Lisa and with the water and sewer department, and she moved this software from start to finish, um, to bring us into the 21st century, so I'd be remiss if I didn't mention her tonight.
Any other questions you want, that's what we need.
Exactly what you want.
Any other questions or concerns, um, on the water bill? Okay, Rachel, continue.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Committee report?
I do, and they're not all about the yelling.
Okay, Patty first, then Katie.
The good news on the Go Art is that it is July 2nd, from 10:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night, it is the Batavia Ramble Explore Music and Arts Festival, there will be 30 bands performing, African drumming, workshops, balloons, things for kids, it's absolutely marvelous, and everybody will want to go to it, it will be downtown, in that downtown Jackson area, not in the park. And the second thing is from Bid, August 20th, we are having an Italian festival, with lights and accordions and bands and Italian food, and everything you can imagine, so it, and that will be very exciting, it will be over in the general south side, and it will be well-attended by the restaurants in town, and the, the different groups that are interested in it, there's still a lot of planning going on, we've just begun, but it sounds like one of the, the really, really great things, it's brand-new. The second thing that's brand-new is very old, years and years ago, when I was little, there used to be a soapbox derby down Ellicott Avenue, which is the only place in the city you can run a soapbox, and we're having it back on August 27th, it used to be run by Aquana, it's now run by Bid, you get a kit, you build a soapbox, you go down there, we hope nobody hits anybody's house, it sounds great, so now you know about what Bid is doing.
Are there any age restrictions?
No, no, I'm sure, John, you can be, I don't know, you ask.
I'd love to do that, that was what I'd do. Long sloping hill, it's like the perfect.
It's the only one that actually works, the State Street one doesn't, the Ellicott does, so it will be very exciting, and you'll hear a lot more about it from me.
Good job. All right, Kathy?
Yes, um, councilperson McGinnis and I attended our second, um, meeting for the annual Batavia Police Community Night, that's going to be held again at City Church St. Anthony's on August 9th, from 5:30 to 8:00, it's a wonderful event, and if Chief High Bush would like to.
Yeah, sure, so it's our annual event, we're, uh, very lucky to have it over at St. Anthony's again this year, um, it's a great location, we pulled together a whole bunch of emergency services, city fire does a big setup over there as well, do some car seat, car seat installation inspections, um, we'll probably have, uh, quite, quite a bit there, uh, we have a dump tank opening, so if anybody wants to jump in the dump tank, we take requests, so, I'll be in there, don't you worry about it.
You'll be in the tank?
No.
No.
It's a great night, so we hope to see everybody.
If it's 110 degrees out, I might consider it.
Oh, yeah.
I've seen the forecast, it's 110.
Look into your piggy bank, the water.
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple items, I have a couple items, Sean spends most of the evening in the dump tank, though I've been at all these events, but, uh, one item, uh, this was, uh, addressed to Rachel, and it's from, uh, who's it, from Bob, uh, from the ice rink, anyway, uh, he said he just wanted to make sure Rachel received recognition for all the effort she and her staff put into to make Friday's event a success, there were 150 people attended the ice rink naming, and, uh, there were hockey people from the eighties and nineties, they haven't seen them, they haven't seen them in years, and, uh, even Kelly's got, uh, had customers coming over buying hot dogs, and each person had a positive, uh, comment about the event, and, uh, the, they came up with some remedies for the facades, installation before the event, and, uh, council president, they mentioned you and I is, they're representing city council, and they said this has never happened in the past, and they said they hope all of this is reflective of the change of the culture at the ice rink, everybody's involved to better the rink, and because of the, these efforts, they were able to donate all the proceeds, the amount of $700, to the David McCarthy Memorial Foundation through a cooperative venture, so, uh, it was just a nice event, and, Bob Gray, uh, he was smiling from ear to ear, he was just one happy fellow, I'll tell you that, and the other, uh, letter I received was from the, uh, State Nursing Home, I did drop off some of the flags that we give out in the parade at the State Nursing Home, Veterans Nursing Home, uh, one for each occupied room, and, uh, they just, uh, sent a letter over stating that they, their gratitude for the donation, and they said these sort of, this type of continued support helps enhance the quality of life that veterans deserve, and they deeply appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind council, at the last meeting, we had the proclamation, um, myself and Chris Camp delivered that to the facility over there on East Main Street, and, uh, everyone was really happy about it, and they had a really good time, another 100th birthday.
Good, that's nice.
Just so you know, that was delivered in person, we did make that happen. Any public comments?
No.
Okay. Any unfinished business? I don't believe you did.
Just a couple of things that I wanted to, kind of, follow up on, um, quite a while back, I, I had asked council if it was okay if I start to pursue, um, just possible solutions to our Oak Street situation, um, and, and things have been relatively quiet as far as complaints, up until just a couple weeks ago, um, just starting to wonder, you know, where we are with all of that, and I did have one gentleman who lives on Pickthorne, who suffers probably, uh, just as badly as anybody who lives on Oak Street with the, with the speed of the trucks, the, the volume of the trucks, the noise of the trucks, um, and so it's, it's, it's an ongoing quality of life issue, uh, for anybody who lives on Oak Street or close by, um, so, I asked him if he would be willing to help me out, I don't want to throw together another committee, we don't need another committee to study things, um, but I asked him if he'd be willing, since it is a major concern of his, if he'd be willing to help me out in looking into some possibilities that I might come back and present to my colleagues on council, he said absolutely, so I just want to, I wanted to, to follow up on that with you, um, just to make sure that, that you are all in agreement that I continue to, to work on this, um, and, and maybe get some other citizens involved in it, um, and come up with some possible solutions.
Was there ever a problem like this, when there was two lanes?
Four lanes.
Or four lanes, I mean?
You know what? I don't know.
Because whoever came up with this idea needs their head examined, because having two lanes is ridiculous.
Well, there, the object, I think, from, from the state's point of view at the time, was if they reduce it down to two lanes, they'll slow everything down.
The mean, of course.
It, it, it really, and that, and it, that didn't solve any problems as far as the volume of traffic, um, it didn't solve any problems about the noise of the traffic, um, and, and so they're, we're in a situation where there's not a whole heck of a lot that we can do right now, but I do believe there might be a few little options that we might be able to come up with to maybe discourage some of that truck traffic from coming down. Um, so I, I just wanted to let you know that I now have a citizen that is, is willing to get involved in the process with me, uh, and I just wanted you're okay on that.
I think it's been, it's been, in the past, council members have formed work groups within their own wards, that, that's a board problem, so, I don't have a problem with you continuing on and working with your neighbors and friends in that area to see if you can come up with some kind of solution that they feel comfortable with, and then, yeah, bring it back.
And then we could present it in, in some form or fashion to the council, and, uh, in the, you know, and, and obviously the police department as well, and, and, you know, kind of, kind of get some people involved, citizen-wise, that, that it directly affects.
Right, sure.
And, so I just wanted to pass that on to you, and then also, um, things have been relatively quiet in my neighborhood up until just recently with the deer population, and we haven't done anything, um, to, to further that, our efforts to decrease deer population, I think because, um, at least on my end, I've seen a, a major decrease after hunting season, so I thought, well, maybe it was a, a fairly abundant hunting season, and they, and the hunters were able to take care of some of the problem on, on their own, um, but I've recently had some complaints, uh, and then also in my backyard, running from one end of my backyard into their backyard, was a, literally, the other day, in the middle of the day, it was around noon time, I think, and I saw this, this line go by my, my back fence, and it was literally a herd of deer in full gallop going across my backyard.
Chasing the goats.
Yeah, so, and then I happened, I saw that, and then I happened to get a call from one of my constituents down the street, that has been complaining that there's just been literally a herd of deer in her backyard on a regular basis, so I said, well, and she said, and there seems to be a lot of fawn, there's some smaller ones, so I don't know, you know, what goes on in the deer world, but, um, there's, there's obviously a, a, an increase in population again, so she was wondering where we stood on that, and I had told her that at this point, we were just kind of hoping that the hunting season would, would show us some results, which we think it did, but now the population may be increasing once again, so maybe it's time that we look at, at, if we need to do something or not, so I wanted to bring that up as some old business.
Rachel, do you want to, I mean, I know the COVID, school being out of session, in session, out of session, it, it was creating a problem, because part of this revolved, revolved around kids being in school and not out wandering in the woods, you know.
And I explained that to her, and she understood that as well, she said, I was just curious as to where we stand on it, since she was starting to see an increase of.
Did you want to add anything?
Sure, absolutely, so the areas identified, um, by the deer management plan as potentials for hunting, none of the landowners signed on at this time, so, the only areas, um, that can be hunted, and only by city, or city employees, um, are down by the wastewater treatment plant, so not affecting your neighborhood or my neighborhood, so we do not have landowners ready to participate in the program, however, I know the assistant chief, who was tasked with going out and meeting with landowners, and speaking with them, and trying to get, uh, them on board, um, was going to go back again this year and see, we were given extra permits last year, um, we were able to get that application in, so it's a good reminder to get ready to put that in again, but Sean, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, so it's a yearly program, our officer, uh, the assistant chief was in charge of it, did, uh, partner with one, an officer that was very interested in doing it, so that officer will move that plan forward, um, it's only during the hunting season, so it doesn't take place outside of that, um, but once, uh, that time comes around where we file producers permits again, we will do so, we will do the mailer and property drop by houses again, to see if we can't get anybody interested, landowners interested in allowing that, but again, we ran into the hurdle last year where no one was interested in allowing.
I, I did, I did explain to her about the various zones that we had identified, and that a good portion of those zones were privately owned land, and they were not willing to allow us to go on the land to do that, I did explain to her, like, like you said, Rachel, that we have some city property that our city employees can hunt on if it becomes a problem, but that obviously would only affect that particular area, she understood, she was just curious as to where it stands, and I said, you know, we'll probably wait again until this hunting season, see what, what, you know, what we get out of, out of this hunting season, what the situation is, and then if we need to, we can at least try to thin the population on city property, uh, I mean, they obviously don't live on city property, they travel around a little bit, but, so it may help the situation in part, but, um, we can, we can go.
And then there's all the deterrent methods on the website that people can look up to protect their vegetation, um, I think that's a big concern, especially in the wintertime, and how the deer, um, go after different types of vegetation, so there's, there's different plants that are deer resistant, you can plant, you can cover them, you can spray them, so there's a whole litany of information on the city's website to help those protect their garden.
Bird feeders, and rotted bird.
There's free food.
The chief brought up one thing, uh, council member Canelli, there's the Genesee County Traffic Safety Committee, so maybe when you get formed, the thoughts around Oak Street that could be referred to them for a review as well.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify, uh, something about Oak Street, about, I think it was 10, 11 years ago, the state came in, and they said, here's the way it plays out, Oak Street's going to be two lanes, we're putting in turning lanes, and there's going to be no parking on Oak Street, period, end of story, so.
End of story, it was the dumbest thing I ever saw in my life.
Dumb or not, it's a state highway, they have no control, and they also made it real clear, the city was in total violation for allowing parking in a driving lane on a state highway, which, when you think about it, you really can't park in a driving lane, which they did, so in any event, Sam Verhulmes, councilman for your side of Oak Street, and myself got together, we met with Steve Hawley, I had several conversations with Steve Hawley, Steve, the assemblyman went to the state, he said, we need to have something worked out here, they sent down their engineers, we had a very long meeting and a long evening, the residents were invited, in the end, we came up with the resolution was that they'd have their turning lanes, they'd have their two-way traffic, and they'd also, what they were, what they had proposed was like they have five feet or four feet on each side by the curbs, and then, uh, five or six-foot separation in the middle between the lanes, so now we have the two lanes and parking for probably 70% of Oak Street, and the residents were really happy about that 60%, because a lot of people to park on Oak Street is vital for them, so, there's no real simple solution, but this was the way it played out, and it took a lot of work to get to that point, and, uh, the downside is, and as your, uh, street people can tell you, and maintenance people, when you start moving lanes around, then also, all the manhole covers are in the wrong spot, so you hear them, and, and they're popping up and banging away, and there's no simple fix to manhole covers, other than digging them up, that's, that's how all this transpired.
Anything else? You have a LED streetlight presented?
We are going to put the screen down.
I wonder if it's going to be okay there when I put the screen down, let's see. I need to just fly back.
I can buy you.
No.
It's good, it's good, no, no, it's good, you're good.
I think we should outlaw, outlaw, outlaw power points, how many power points I've seen in my career?
What do you want?
Guess it's time to take a little nap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, fucking water was going to my street.
Thank you.
I had a streetlight for so long, I've forgotten about it.
Looks like it's Clarence.
Actually, it looks like a little town in the Old West.
Here, I can leave early, John, normally I just go, go.
Oh, Angie, you still plug it on.
Lights over there, so the front goes down.
Oh. You can leave the back ones on. I just need to figure out how to turn on my clicker. Thanks, Angie. Okay. As you all know, we are moving forward with Phase One LED Streetlight Project here in the city of Batavia. This is a very pretty image of a downtown that has switched to LED lights. The NIPA is our partner in this conversion. They are the nation's largest public utility. They have, they provide 25% of the state's electricity, and 80% of it is produced with hydropower. NIPA helps large and small communities convert to energy-efficient LED street lighting, so another picture of what LED streetlights look like at night. NIPA has helped us simplify the process, and they will help us save money in the long run by converting to these lights. New York State has a goal overall of converting 500,000 streetlights to LED by 2025. NIPA and their full-service solution helps with the improvement in the quality of light, it makes roadways safer for vehicle and pedestrian use, and will save the city money on expenses and maintenance. So this slide just shows the LED, which stands for Light-Emitting Diode, is today's most energy-efficient and rapidly developing lighting technology. The light bulbs last longer, are more durable, and offer comparable or better light quality than all other types of lighting. As you've heard before, when council approved Phase One, the benefits of the project are energy and cost savings. There's a 10-year warranty on the lights that we're purchasing, energy and maintenance cost savings, because when you put in new lights, you don't have to maintain them immediately. The hope is that they last for the full 10 to 15 years, sometimes 30. There are environmental benefits, has reduced carbon footprint, we talked about improved lighting quality, light pollution, public safety enhancements, and a decrease in outages and maintenance calls, which I know everyone here has a lot of maintenance calls in their neighborhoods. We're going to discuss the difference between the city-owned lights and national grid lights next. So this is the before and aftershock of a highway somewhere in western New York, showing the difference in the quality of light. As you can see, the first light kind of has that orangey-yellow glow, kind of shadowy, and the other one is a bright, clear, crisp light, much easier to drive on this road at night with the LEDs. So this graph is about lumina, lumen maintenance curve for various commercial lighting types, and it, it looks very technical, but it really just shows you the lifespan of LEDs is longer than any other technology. There was a huge project in Los Angeles, and they installed over 140,000 lights, and only 2.2% of those lights that were installed failed. So it's less than 1% of an entire lighting project where a light will fail and need to be replaced, you know, immediately or in the, in the very early days. And the lights that we're working on purchasing in our Phase One come with a 10-year warranty, so even if we did need to replace that light that failed in our downtown district, we can do so under warranty, and it costs the city nothing. So next, I wanted to show you the graph, and I forgot to say, Brett and Michael, jump in at any time if you have anything to add. This is Phase One update. So the light inventory that you see, the green dots, and we've talked about this, the lights the city owns are on our major thoroughfares, on the state routes. Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, the blue is where we own decorative poles, correct? So you're going to see that on Allocut Avenue, you're going to see it in our downtown corridor, but these are all the lights that we have approval, and we're moving forward for lighting replacement in the next four to five months. The total cost of the project is estimated at $800,000. It was part of the capital plan that was approved last year and again this year. We completed a full GIS inventory on our lights, so we're going to have mapping systems where we know every single pole, every single number, every single setting of every single light, and try to achieve uniform lighting across our entire city. Today, this represents the 600 lights that the city maintains, which is 40% of the lights in the entire city. So Phase One financials, with the amount of decorative lights, and I'll call them non-Cobra headlights, the financials weren't as good as we originally expected, so we will have an annual operations and maintenance saving, about $1,600 a year, and $33,000 over the life of the project. And the life of the project, simple payback with the incentives, is about 22 years. So this, because when they originally did our estimates, they didn't realize the number of decorative poles we had, and the fixtures for the decorative poles or the lumineers, is that correct, Michael? Is that the right word? Are a little different than what would be put into a Cobra head. So we asked them to help us look at all of the lights in the city. So the next map with the blue dots shows you basically the residential sections of the city, and these are all the lights owned currently by National Grid, owned and serviced. Now, the city and your council members get numerous calls, probably monthly, about different lights that are out, and what we do is transmit those calls to National Grid and ask that those lights be fixed at, you know, their earliest convenience. The system is a little difficult, because we don't have full control over these lights, and they're not moving to LED, so we will have our main corridors updated to LED, where these lights will maintain the same phosphorus-type lighting system that they've always had. So we asked National Grid and their consultants to look at another Phase Two project, which would require us to buy out the lights, and not the poles, but the lights from National Grid, to then maintain them ourselves. And many other communities are doing this and have found it successful. So the financials estimates on what we're calling Phase Two, which would be a buyback of those lights, is about a $923,000 project. And this project alone would have a payback of almost $16,000 a year in our lighting maintenance budget, and we would be, we would pay back on the debt by eight and a half years. So we wanted to explore this option with council, we wanted to bring it forward for any questions, and then we wanted to combine what Phase Two, One and Two look like overall as a total project. The funds for the buyout come directly from the power authority, they do short-term financing over the life of the project, and then we roll this into a bond at the end of it, and that is our plan, and we pay off the bond costs with our lighting budget that we have today. So the combined financials show that we take Phase One, which was a 20-year payback, 22-year payback, and Phase Two, an eight-year payback, and we combine them for a total project of 1.68 million. We will, we'll have a payback in 11 years, and on the whole project, we will save $141,000. So this is again the combination of Phase One and Phase Two, and I just want to point out that we do have an electrician on staff, and we have other members in the Schmidt group that help with these types of activities, but there are going to be some, some problems with lightings beyond their depth and skill, so we would work with a small maintenance contract annually, and this was factored in to the cost, and we still feel that we can save the money in this budget line for years to come. So we think it's about 14.2 annually, depending on when we go to bond for it and the interest rates, that percentage could go up or down, we might actually save more than this annually. So the process that we have to undertake, if council decides that this is an option they'd like us to continue to pursue, the city of Batavia requests the streetlight acquisition pricing proposal from National Grid. We did so, and to buy out the lights is $226,000. That would be all rolled into the project costs, so when you see the Phase Two and the combined financials, that's taking into account that buyout price from National Grid. They would provide, oh, they did provide us the pricing, and what happens next is city Batavia needs to provide a letter of intent to purchase the streetlight assets from the utility, then National Grid provides a purchase and sale agreement, and that is executed by the municipality and National Grid and sent to the Public Service Commission. It's also filed with other paperwork, and then once there's approval from the Public Service Commission, National Grid and the city actually close on the streetlight sale. So the city does not actually make a purchase and fully commit until the close of this sale, just to be clear. So coming to you all tonight, I wanted to give you the information that we've been working on over the last six months, have you ask any questions, and if you're amenable, have something put on the next conference agenda for you to look at.
Did you say that we buy the, the lights, not the poles?
Correct. Not the poles.
So why, why not the poles?
We do not, they own the poles, and Michael, can you explain this?
That's the answer as well.
Is there a way that we get our hands tied, not own the poles, something's wrong with the poles, we own the lights?
So they would come in and do any work on their poles, it would just be, like you said, the mast arms, the lighting itself. A lot of their poles do have power on it already, so we, you know, we're not involved with grid's power.
And they also lease out space on their poles, that's what it is, now they say that.
It didn't make sense, we're buying the light, not the pole?
Yeah.
There's going to be a catch somewhere, or they must have something that's involved.
Yep, they lease, so they probably lease out to, whether it's fiber, telephone, and other places, to transmit those wires as well. So they're not going to give that up.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mike.
There's a warranty, cover, power surges, a power surge from a lightning strike that may take out multiple lights at any given time.
As far as I know, it does. It's a, it's a full warranty on that light. If that light no longer works, we can replace it in time for up to 10 years.
I'd like to see a definitive answer on that.
Okay.
Other than that, it all looks like the wave of the future.
Okay. Councilmember Canelli?
Timeframe-wise, give me, give me an idea from, from, there's a couple different things here, what's the timeframe from the time we send in the letter of intent to the time that we close, and then what is the timeframe of, anticipated timeframe of getting all these lights replaced?
So I'll go with Phase One first. So Phase One, they have ordered all the lights, we start this week, a pre-construction meeting. So my hope is that four months to five months, all of the city lights, so the ones we saw on the main thoroughfare, will be replaced. Phase Two will take a bit longer, so the, if we send in a letter of intent to purchase the asset from National Grid, there's a, there's a clock that runs, and each party has so many days to continue moving forward with this process, it could take us nine months to finish everything up contractually before we can go out and order those lights for the neighborhood. So I'm looking a year from now at least before we're ready to do that Phase Two on-the-ground construction, and we call it construction, but it's, it's replacement of lights. Yep. So Phase One obviously is moving along very nicely, but again, some of the financials, when they did our modeling, only had Cobra headlights in it, they didn't have the decorative poles, and that changed the finances of the project. It's still, I think, I think it would be very neat to have our entire city lit with LEDs and have consistent lighting, and not have the complaints, or be able to handle the complaints ourselves, maybe in a quicker manner than, than we do now.
LED lights would help the police cameras versus that amber color.
From a public safety perspective, it's a much better one.
There's all kinds of technology to put into lights now, but we're just, we're just stepping into Phase One of this, right? Like, we just want lights that work, we want streets that are lit, we want people to feel safe, and not have, on Summit the other day, there was four lights out, like, one entire side of the block was completely dark, and I'm thinking to myself, jeez, I don't want to walk down there when it's completely dark like that, that's not, it just doesn't feel safe. With brand-new lights, we're just going to have a way better quality of light, and the goal is, we're not going to worry about them for 10 to 15 years. They said even as, even as LEDs die, they still emit more light than sodium vapor lights at 80%. So they could be at their end of their life and still brighter than the lights we have today. So it's kind of, kind of neat technology. So if everybody, you know, gives me a little bit of.
Do you think that everybody, people complain that it's too bright in their house?
No, because the way they do them is they.
They know, but you're going to get, you're going to get something, I just.
You know what, Paul, you're right. Councilmember Really, you're probably right. But usually they try to make the lights go down, Rich would know about this from the planning committee, right? Like, don't you, like, when you, you place a light in a public or residential area, you try to see what the measurement is going to be and how far it'll broadcast out, and that it's not going to infringe on somebody's walking their cat at night, you know, their outdoor cats. Okay, thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
John, wasn't that the most exciting PowerPoint you've ever seen?
Riven.
Wasn't it? I mean, come on.
It was illuminating.
Amendment or Resolution 47, 2022, Mr. Canelli?
Thank you, Council President, I move a resolution to amend the 2022-23 Police Department's Budget to reflect the receipt of a New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services warrant.
Second in line. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 49, 2022, the ordinance officer, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President, I move a resolution to amend the 2022-23 Police Department's Budget to reflect the receipt of a New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services warrant.
Second in line. Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Any questions or concerns? Now, Rachel, was this the one that increased a short, just wanted to bring that to your attention? Originally was approximately 12,000, and increased approximately 14,000, if I read that right?
That's correct, yep, we just got a letter in the mail saying that our allocation would increase.
So that was a positive influence, but we still have to make sure that you understand what we're voting on. Any other questions or concerns on that? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 49, 2022, the ordinance officer, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President, I move a resolution to create a position of ordinance enforcement officer.
Second in line, Mr. Canelli. Any questions or concerns on this? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 49, 2022, the ordinance officer, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President, I move a resolution to create a position of ordinance enforcement officer.
Second in line, Mr. Canelli. Any questions or concerns on this? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Resolution 50, 2022, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an inter-municipal agreement with Genesee County Planning Board exempting certain minor lay-use actions from Genesee County Planning Board review.
Second in back. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Resolution 51, 2022, Mr. Veely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter a agreement with MCJ Construction LLC for replacement of filter media.
Second in back, Mr. Canelli. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Resolution 52, 2022, Mr. Baikowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to authorize the use of K-9 committed fund balance.
Second in back, Mr. Richmond. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 53, 2022, Mr. Veely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution afferring the proposed restriction on animal infill in addition to 190-42 miscellaneous regulations of the City of Batavia Municipal Code.
Second in back, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Baikowski?
No.
Jankowski?
Resolution 54, 2022.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize budget amendments for the 21-22 fiscal year.
Second in back, Mr. Canelli. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
And Resolution 55, 2022, Ms. Briggs, please.
I move a resolution to declare lead agency status for the Jackson Street Water Project.
Second in back, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
To the Veely side. Second in back, Mr. Richmond. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.